Welcome to Somerset Showcase. Today, we are here to talk about a very important meeting that the town has coming up on May 20th, starting at 6:00 PM at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School. It is the annual town meeting where the residents vote on budgets and a lot of other items that are important to the town. We're here with Jameson Souza, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, and Marco Lucci, the Town Administrator, who I know have put in an awful lot of work preparing for this. Want to tell me a little bit about that, about the process that goes into preparing for the town meeting?
Yeah, thanks, yeah.
Yeah, that's, it seems to be a never-ending process. And it's kind of funny, as soon as we get done with fall, the fall special meeting, we're already working on the annual. So we do start it right around the ending of fall, in the sense of the budgets. In November, we're putting out guidance that said, that says, hey, look, even though we're still in this calendar year, before July 1st, we need the following departments and department heads are already working on it. Then, once we flip over to the new calendar year, we start to get into the weeds a little more. The board puts out an agenda for the rest of the fiscal year on when dates will come up. And we saw that again this year, when certain budgets from certain departments have to be back, the meetings that they'll actually go before the board, which is always a good time when department heads get to bring forth what there is they're asking for and whether we can afford that as a community. And throughout that process, we're working on articles. So we set dates for articles, not just for members of the community that put in. And there's another article, we saw the fluoride one last year, on a citizen's petition. That one is back on the agenda for this year again. And then we have the ones from, whether it's CPA funds, where those articles are coming from. Sometimes the select people will add an article. And then there's kind of the general articles for our capital costs that end up there every year, which has been another point of good discussion on what we might do with some of that stuff. So the process is, I wish I could say there's kind of a lull, but there really isn't. As soon as we're done with annual, as we flip the page to the next fiscal, we're already working on a special. And this year, we could end up with more than one special. So it's a very comprehensive process that involves a lot of people and takes a lot of time. But it all works out in the end when we have something good that we can present to town meeting.
Yeah, so as a board, to follow up with what Mark was saying is, I think it was about November, we kind of started the roadshow a little bit, where we went to the school committee and the water department came on in, as well as Mark started sitting down with all the other department heads as well to kind of give what we felt was, you know, a number that would be reasonable for the residents of our community. And then come early February, we did a little bit different than years past. We did budget meeting, essentially it was like a budget week. And we had every single night, we were working on the budget. It was, we felt that this, doing it this way was more fluid. And if we had to be moving things around, we're deep into it right there. And then, instead of kind of waiting a week or waiting two weeks and then going back to the budget. And now we're ready for May 20th. And we feel that the articles that we've submitted are, you know, a good foundation for our community.
All right, so let's talk about some of the articles.
Yeah, sure.
First of all, the special town meeting will have just one article on it. And can you tell me about that article, what people will be voting on?
Yeah, so that's the middle school project. And we're very fortunate that our state rep and our state senator, Patricia Hadden and Michael Rajics fought for the MSBA to give us additional funds. If people recall, what happened was, it was about two years ago, when we started the middle school project, the bids came on in and they were higher than expected because of inflation during, because of COVID. So we were short about $9 million. And the, our state delegation went out there with a few other communities. I believe it was 31 other districts, school districts, that fell kind of in this, in this pond, so to speak. And now we're very fortunate to be bringing in a little bit above $6.8 million of grant money. They'll be added to the grant that we're receiving from the MSBA. I know Mark is on the building committee and Mark can kind of talk about the exact details of how that money is going to be spent.
Yeah, so that's been an interesting process too. And to Jameson's point, it's really amazing when so late in the process, the state's able to come back, all the people that were involved and said, hey, there's an additional $6.8 million that we're able to add to your bottom line. So that's been exceedingly helpful for the community. From the community standpoint, we saw how they cut a lot of those fields and the items that were on the back end of that building. And then they went inside the building when the, I believe it was $9 million was not secured. They said, well, how are we going to reduce costs further? So this was before the $6.8 million. There were even places where they had, you know, cut down a hallway or changed the pattern of an egress because of money that it would, it would take out of the budget. So when this money came back, there's an opportunity now to reinvest in kind of those sports, those fields in general from a town standpoint. So it is tremendous. And right now, I think the middle school committee, you know, we have somewhere just over $4.5 million of projected costs that they'll be using that $6.8 million. So there may even be a difference in there that we'll, we'll see what we're allowed to do from the town standpoint with the remaining of those funds.
And people need to remember too, this is additional money. This is grant money. This is not additional money that the taxpayers are going to be spending on it. This is money that is coming down from the state that can now go to the project to finish the project. We need to accept it, we need to vote to accept it. And then the money that is not used will then be put into free cash later on for us to then identify later on.
Yeah, we'll make sure that the MSBA has no problem. I know that's been, a lot of people have been talking, they said it's our money to do with as we please. There've been some other examples where they've had money associated, whether it was to the bond or money coming in from MSBA that they've held in a bucket for future use that might be tied to that. But we'll see exactly what it is we want to do and make sure that the residents are aware of it.
Okay, so immediately following that special town meeting will be the annual town meeting.
Yes. It's not going to end right after the special.
So there'll be 35 articles on that warrant. The budgets are, one of them, can you tell me about the budgets and what people will be voting on?
Yeah, if you want to go into the general budget.
Yeah, so you've got the general budget amounts that we've kind of, we've already expressed. And, you know, we've talked about where the water budget will be, where the town budget, general government will be, where the school budget will be, appropriations for our regional partners. And then some of our, you know, we've had a discussion the other night with advisory and finance when we went through all those different articles. You have the articles that came up in CPA, I believe there's four or five on that side. And then on our side, you saw there were a couple of articles on the fire department with some of the equipment they're purchasing. The police department has two of their cruisers on there. So, and we have the sundries account that we asked for. So there are a lot of items that, you know, are kind of a quasi-capital slash operation hybrid, if you will. And the totals are kind of all over the, all over the place. We know that last November, we certified just over $5 million in free cash. And we're spending just over two, maybe, I think it came to around 2.4 with the total cost of our articles. So we could end up carrying an additional $2 million into the fall for this year. But if there's a specific article that anyone has a question on, I'll certainly be happy to jump on that.
The general government budget is how much?
So the general government budget, overall, where the town is around an $80 million budget. You know, you've got, but then you've got the, you've got to parcel them out, you've got to pull out the $8 million for the water department, the $25 million roughly for the school, the town's around $30, $31 million. And, you know, so those are all the pieces that kind of make up the general. So there's a lot of different numbers when we talk about, you know, what's the town budget look like?
Yeah, three regional school districts that are attached to it as well. So it adds up very quickly.
And what would be the increase over this current fiscal year to the next?
That came to, I believe it was three, I want to say 3.7, right around there. It was, I want to say it was 1.2 on the town side and then over $3 million on the school side. But that's for all of our, all of our obligations, whatever money touches the school. So it's not just the K-3, we have the regional high school, we have Diamond, we have Bristol Aggie. All of those costs come into that.
So the goal was, I mean, we set the goal at 2.5% increase. We came close to that with all of the, all the departments, you know, really digging deep into what their budget looked like currently, what it would be for the next fiscal year. I commend, you know, Mr. Lucci, along with all the department heads, in making sure that our obligations to our contracts were being met, as well as staying within the defined numbers that we were looking at. We understand that there's certain departments, you know, putting out that 2.5%, it's very difficult, i.e. the school department, we know that. But, you know, we commend them, they're still working at it as we're taping. And they're trying to figure out how to, you know, give a quality education at the best value to the residents.
Yeah, you have a lot of fixed costs that go up every year, right?
We do, we have a lot of fixed costs that go up. I mean, most of our expenses that show the sharpest increase are always related to electricity and gas and kind of the commodities that the town has no ability to control. The regional budget was an interesting conversation this year because they only grew that budget by under 3%. However, our obligation was up over 7.5%. So we had to make up a lot more money on what we're obligated to fund. Because of the formula that they use, where, you know, whether it's students with, on a program that the cost might be higher and the formula, the way it breaks down, who's coming out of the program, who's coming in and which town is hosting those and obligated to pay that money.
That's the other district's special education.
Correct, yeah, that is correct.
Which can be very volatile as we.
It is, and so we've seen where the, you know, the town of Somerset, where our obligation has increased. And then we've seen it where it's been a negative number, where that number is. So it ranges, you know, many different ways. Same thing with Diamond and Bristol Aggie. We're seeing now the new buildings, Bristol Aggie, they are fully complete with their new build. And now we're seeing Diamond starting the new build. If you're driving by 24, you can kind of see through the leaves, you know, that project going. And, you know, they're keeping us, you know, through the whole process, you know, we're part of all the discussions of what's going on with Diamond.
Yeah, our Somerset representative to Diamond, Don DiBiaseo, was very involved with that, right? He was the Chair of the Building Committee?
He is, and he's very fortunate for, you know, to have a Somerset resident to be in that leadership role.
Yeah, Don's great, and he does reach out occasionally to check on things and make sure that we're not having any issues with the town on our side. You know, one of those other costs, fixed costs that you mentioned, and, you know, and I would just throw out there that this year, we saw it with the tax bills. When they came out last year, we're carrying the new debt on the new building. So now that the taxes will come up to, you know, or are at a level to pay that debt and what we're obligated to pay every year, now you'll see, you know, because you'll see a spike in the levy to accommodate that debt. And then next year, you'll see, you know, something not as high as that. And that's why it was so important on, in my opinion, for, you know, what the board was doing, what they were trying to establish, keep that 2.5 new growth and just kind of recognize this is where, you know, we took on the debt last year and the taxes came up to a certain point. So what can we do to really reduce any increases other than what would have to take place?
And moving forward, the goal is, is when any kind of bills are out there, we're going to be identifying, letting everybody know, you know, where their money is being spent. It's a good way, I think it's just transparency. So people are spending a good number of their tax dollars that they're, that they make. And we want to make sure that they know that it's going to good use and where it's going to.
What are those fixed classes, health insurance, how is that looking?
Health insurance is very difficult. And, you know, health insurance is interesting because it ties itself to OPEB, which is an article in there as well. But when we first sat down with our finance team and our consultants, they were talking about healthcare costs going up roughly 21%, which would have been huge. Now, there were some levers that could be pulled. So the members on that committee got together and they kind of tasked the consultants with, well, what can we do to reduce these costs? And they came up with some different scenarios where, well, right now you're charging this. If we break, you know, if we kind of put people on this plan, the benefits don't change, but the plan itself is less expensive to the taxpayers. So I want to say there were five different levers and we just activated all of them without compromising the healthcare that any of our employees, active and retired, receive. And it's not wrinkle-free. There have been people that, you know, have reached out because they might be, we even have some individuals who spend half their time in Florida, half their time here. So how does that break out? Because if we're changing a plan where they're not on a PPO or something similar, they get the benefits of who they can go to doctors right here in Massachusetts, what are those other individuals? Luckily, there are only a few examples where that takes place. The majority are right here and we can make exceptions for those individuals. But in short, we were able to reduce that down to, I believe it was almost just under 5%. And then we have a trust fund where we have, I want to say it was around, don't hold me to these numbers, George, I want to say it was around $8 million we took, which is high, it's always good to have that. We reduced some of that to offset some of that cost. And we reduced the healthcare cost to, I think it was just under 3% or right around 3%. One of the things we were trying to establish and work on was, we hear it all the time, the people that say, well, you know, you're providing a raise for me this year, my salary's still going down because of what it costs for healthcare and benefits. That percentage was higher than what I received in an increase for a raise. So that was part of a formula that, you know, myself and our team kind of looked at and said, how are we going to be most impactful where we can reduce costs and still give our employees an edge when it comes to what they're receiving compensation? It worked out well.
And I just want to add, you know, when someone says, oh, you have $8 million sitting in an account. Well, there is a reason why we need to have that. That's where unforeseen things that happen in the healthcare with our individuals that are part of that. So, you know, we're self-insured, so to speak, too.
And there were, a couple of years ago, the town brought that number to zero. We were completely underfunded, where we had to make additional cuts and there was no choice because there was no money for it. So even now, when, you know, the finance director kind of looks at it and is like, wait a minute, I was here when that thing went to zero, are you thinking about taking money? So it's certainly, we're always trying to find the balance, but it's a great point.
It's a liability that we always have to track. And there is an article talking about that unfunded liability that a lot of communities are not even handling and not even addressing. They're kind of kicking the can down the road. Where, you know, we are fortunate that we can actually start taking care of that unfunded liability.
So, and Jameson's talking about the OPEB or other post-employment benefits. Those, and that people comes up a lot, you know, you ask someone about OPEB and they think you're talking about gas in the Middle East, and that is not the case. But that, that is an interesting conversation because you'll see a lot of cities and towns only recently tackling that. And it's one of these, it's one of these instances where the threat is always on the horizon and you can't tell if it's ever moving closer or getting further away. And why, what I mean by that is, if the money that we're collecting now and saving towards, if you have an employee who works from the age they're 20, they retire at 65, but at 65, they live to their 85, who's paying for those benefits when they no longer work and paying into the system? What's so interesting about that formula is that every year it changes because we don't know what the healthcare costs are 20, 30 years down the road from now. We don't know what the salaries are that are making up the difference in trying to compensate for what will be paid out later on. So it is a very fluid issue. And one of the things that the state and kind of the experts have looked at saying, well, why don't you annually look at that number to see where it's moving to and how much money are you putting into it? And, you know, the state of Massachusetts came out with some guidance. They even codified it in Mass General Law that the town adopted several years ago with setting up a trust fund specifically for OPEB, which we have. And that's what we're contributing to this year. All of those things help. One of the biggest things that hit us in last year were the Moody's rating. And if we have to go to bond for a new wastewater treatment plant, we're going to be before Moody's again. They're automatically going to review the town again to see the financials. And OPEB came up last year. It will come up again because they're going to say, well, are you funding that? It affects our borrowing costs. If we have a huge liability on the town side when it comes to those benefits in the future, then it could reduce our rating, which would increase our cost for borrowing money, which is how we get things done. So yeah, it's a very important article. I'm very happy that we're able to put, you know, a really good number into it this year. And it's something that the community will see annually, will make sure that we're contributing to that.
A long time ago, I did a story on the OPEB and they had projections on the amount that the town would have to pay over a certain amount of years. And those numbers were staggering.
It's very, very high.
I want to say right now that it's around $125 million. Of course, when you have conversations with some of the money people and say, well, I, you know, how do I explain to the constituents, what does that mean? That we're going to default there? Nope, because the, it's always on the horizon. And the steps we're taking now, next year when we do that audit, what does that number look like now? What's that unfunded liability, has it reduced? What's taken place with that number? So it's one that we need to constantly track and make sure we're paying attention to.
Okay, we could probably talk about the budget all day, but.
It's very exact.
Why don't we talk about some other articles on the warrant that are?
Any particular? Yeah, George.
You want to start with the Old Town Hall? You want to start with that one?
Yeah, no, the Old Town Hall, that's been on our radar for the past year, year and a half. As people know, we had to shut it down because of, there's some issues with the flooring where the restrooms are. We had money allocated for that. Unfortunately, when we went out to bid, that number was really short of the number. And so we couldn't do that project. The goal is, is that with the money that we'd allocate this year, we would fix that issue right away. Next year, what you'll be seeing is a plan put together by the town, by the selectmen, essentially using CPA funds to then restore the Old Town Hall to, it's almost original state. And we've had discussions of then how we're going to be utilizing that. And we'll continue to have those discussions over the next several months before we put that plan together and put it out there to the public. But the goal is, let's get it back up and running. Let's get the public starting to utilize it once, like it once did. And then, then we'll move forward with the project with CPA funds.
And there's also an article that would provide some funding to do some other work at Town Hall and other town buildings?
Yeah, so you've got the Old Town Hall that Jameson just indicated, that specifically for the bathrooms that came up, how do we reopen the building? That would be the first step. If the money that's been indicated in going into other areas of Old Town Hall, if we can fold that back into the CPA accounts and then kind of redistribute it, refocus it on what needs to be done for a building, that's why that's important for next year. The account you're talking to is our sundries account. We've had them in the past. And I know the high school even had one a couple of years ago. And it's something that you absolutely need, you know, you budget to what you need, but the unexpected can happen. And now it's, where's the funding source? Well, we're going to have to have another meeting so that we can get it approved to spend. In the past, we've had two sundry accounts that were both $300,000 apiece. This one happens to be $400,000, I'm asking for a little more. Recognize that there could be motions on the floor. But when you consider the total amount of free cash that we have, this is a good opportunity. If the free cash was already destined for other buckets or other areas, then I probably would have asked for less. The account stays there. So anytime, and I included some of the properties in the past, it's been specifically buildings. And I know I mentioned into advisory and finance, I was talking about parking lots. But it's very difficult throughout these months as, you know, we're just talking, we're mapping out kind of the budget process and the article process. And a lot of these things become town sinks, I'm sorry, time sinks. So it's difficult. And what I like is the flexibility to these sundry accounts because it can be, they're great for emergencies and we still keep them on that. But there are other times we can flex where, hey, do we have to wait a whole nother year before we get this parking lot changed? Or this, it's not really an emergency, but this needs to be fixed. And hey, this roof over here or this boiler just went. When we have the ability to pivot and show that, hey, here's where the money's going, that's like taxpayer money at work. And I really like those sundry accounts because the first question asked when you go before the board is, what's the funding source? So, you know, something happens where we can make an improvement, we can address it. And we can say, hey, the sundries, this was approved at the annual town meeting. We can use this money, let's get this done. So for me, it gives us kind of a robust approach to dealing with things. We still have the emergencies when they pop up and we have a little more flexibility. And that's what I really like about those accounts.
Yeah, and as we were in front of the A&amp;F the other night, we explained, the selectmen have always been very conservative with the sundries account. That is the emergency piece of it. Or as Mark alluded to, where it's something that we've, we're trying to accomplish, where, but we just didn't have the time to do it. We don't have anything identified, so don't, you know, we don't want anyone to think like, we're doing this right now, we don't have anything identified. But it could be something that comes up in August or September for us to then handle at that time.
And a lot of things happen throughout the year. So, and as people know, we always have the ability to spend down the account and keep it there year after year. Or if, you know, someone wanted the money to go back in, it would just be certified as free cash once again and it would come out in a different area. So there's a lot of flexibility with those accounts, they're very important for the town.
I mean, we have a lot of different articles on here. There's one that would allow people to work for senior citizens in order to help them to take a little money off their tax bills.
Yeah, no, I think it's something that the board realized when we were going through the budget. And especially when the tax bills went out this past year and listening to our residents, that there's a need for a program like this. We've had this program in existence, but what we're doing now is we're changing the limits. The limits haven't been changed in some time. And we're looking at what those limits are and also giving an opportunity. We understand that some seniors can't do it. So this will also give an opportunity where they can actually have a sponsor that will do it for them as well. It's a great program for us and for the residents. It's just another way, another avenue to help them.
Yeah, it's a very, very interesting because the town, when they take something from Mass General Law, a lot of times they don't adopt the whole thing. And that was the issue here, they didn't have a proxy work-off program. So the board looking to increase those numbers too. And there's a maximum that we can, we're held to. So no one's taxes are going away, but at the same time, we're able to increase kind of the levels of, based on the income, the income that was, you know, 20, 25, 30 years ago is different when you recognize, well, this is what it would be that many years ago. Can you increase the level to this? And we talked about language that would kind of answer that, a percentage that would go up every year. We were kind of working on things in that respect so that we don't have to keep coming back and lifting the, you know, the lines. But there was no proxy work-off. So someone who was bedridden and couldn't do the work, how are they going to take advantage of this program? And that's what this allows it to do. The board recognized that. They made sure that it was an article because it has to come in the same way it had come in in the past. And that was through town meeting. So this stands to really benefit our seniors.
And it's kind of, you know, the night that we were talking about it, it was the night that the Water and Sewer Commissioners were in front of us as well. And it was good to hear that the commissioners said, wait a minute, we can, you know, essentially do something like this as well with the water bill. And they're looking into how to handle that piece. So, because Steve Catteratt working in another community, said, wait, we do it. We do that in that community and we should be able to do something like that here in Somerset. We do, we do that in, in, in that community, and we should be able to do something like that here in Somerset. So it, it's just another way of, we understand that the, you know, the taxes, especially people on fixed income, that it's a major, a major impact to them, and this is just so a way to, to help them.
And Mark, you will be giving a presentation on the impact on taxes that.
Thank you for reminding everyone of that, George.
Some people know that.
Yes, same, same as last year, a quick overview of where we are, how we got there, our revenues, our expenses, and what the bottom line, what the impacts are, absolute.
It's a state of the town, just so everybody knows.
It's the highlight of my year.
When, when we're going into the town meeting to, to let everybody know where, where we're starting and what our vision is moving forward.
Yeah, it, it does a great job, but to, to me, everyone always asks the same question often, they're like, well, where's my money going? Where is it going? And it's, it's, it's a great opportunity, we show everything, right down to the sentence, this is where the money comes from, and we see it right now, we're talking, we talk about an operating budget of just over $30 million, and, and we're talking about the overall budget of 80, well, how the heck do you get between those two numbers? And you get to see all of that, so you get to see the, the state assisted money, you get to see where all of our money comes into, and then everything it touches. So those, those things are certainly important, and I look forward to it.
And this is why people should come to town meetings, so they know where their money is going, and, and they can have an impact on it by, by going to town.
It's the best form of government where all of us, we're actually, all, all of us are residents here and taxpayers, that to, to voice, you know, voice your, your vote, you, everyone has an equal say in how we're going to be spending our money next fiscal year. It's a new way of governing.
But there has been an issue with people not thinking enough, people come to town meeting, and do we need to make changes to it to, to get more people to participate or just to run the government?
It's something that the, you know, our, our board, we, we've talked about a few times of, you know, breaking it down. Do we do two different meetings? Do we have meetings on Saturday? How, how do we get more people? Communication, I think, is very important, so you, you see, we're doing this show here on SATV. This coming week, you're going to see some signage going out there, also some mailers going on out to all, all the, all the taxpayers, all the registered voters, you need to be registered to vote to go into town meetings. So you need to go down, need to go see our town clerk, Caitlin, get to meet her, she's new, and register to vote if you're not registered to vote. If you are registered to vote, you can just come on in, doors will open up at 5:15, and then we'll start right at 6, promptly at 6.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's always difficult, we, we do the babysitting, we do the, the signs on the green, people, people are always looking for, well, what's, what's the best way? I think we could have a grassroots campaign where we go door to door and let everyone know, and you'll have the same number of people, because all you have to do is look back at the statistics, and other than the stuff that, you know, and I know there was a year ago where you guys, several years ago, you had to go, go to a, a place, you know, kind of outside the venue to accommodate everyone.
That's when we tend to have big crowds, the, the high school.
The high school regionalization.
Walmart.
Oh, there you go.
Those were big.
Yeah, at the time, yeah, yeah, Walmart was coming in, and, yeah, that was a very.
Do you expect a lot of people to come to this town meeting? Is there anything you think is going to draw?
I, I don't think any, any different than the, than the last couple of years that I've seen. I, it's, it's, it's a short list, we were, I was, I was focused on that midnight hour, and the concerns that were raised last time, and we certainly don't want that. The 35 articles and, you know, one on the special, so I, but I don't see anything on there that's like, we, you know, everyone has to run down.
And I don't want to kind of talk it down because I want people to show up. But, you know, and, and hear what's going on and vote on it. But a lot of this is, is the operation of our town. It is important for people to be there, but this is, it's, most of it is standard, standard articles that are there. You know, the typical articles, you know, we, we got to certify the elections, we got to then, you know, certify the budgets. You know, and, and this is an opportunity for people to get up and ask those questions, though, too. That's what we're there for, we'll have the Board of Selectmen, the, the school department will be there, Water and Sewer, planning, zoning, all, all of the elected members will be there to, to answer the, the questions. I know Housing Authority has something on there with the CPA, they'll be there as well. So thi- this is, this is a great opportunity for people.
I mean, is there a plan for, if, if it does start to get to a late hour and we still have a lot to do, after what happened with that last special town meeting, is there a plan to maybe continue it to another day or, or so that we're not there until 12:30 at night?
I don't have a problem, I can tell everybody that, I don't have a problem making that motion. We would, we would then have to end it with a continuance, but then we'd have to repost because we do not have that meeting. So we would have to follow the Mass General Laws to repost, what is it, seven or is it 14 days?
If it's the special, it'd be two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, so if it's, if it's a special, if we, if we're still in the special at 12 o'clock. We're just, we're, we're just accepting money, we shouldn't, that shouldn't be a long, long process there. But if it's, if it's the other, it's, you know, seven days, so we would have to then, you know, we'd have to set up a meeting in school, the Board of Selectmen would have to set up that meeting, we would have to vote on it, and then we'd have to have that meeting seven days later, so. I, I don't foresee that happening in this, but you never know, and.
Yeah, some towns, some towns will book back to back, but I think some of the stuff or what we, the lessons we learned last time have, have been incorporated already because you don't see.
There's less articles on here.
And you don't see, do you see any water articles? One thing we ask them is to kind of look at putting a lot of these articles into their operating budget. So we talk about it with the, with the police cars, we're already doing it in other departments. And, you know, the biggest thing is not to, is to make sure the money doesn't get lost, and it, and it doesn't get, you know, kind of, hey, where, where did this go? And, and it's really important that we take hard looks at those budgets, but those, and I'm not picking on the water department, but there might be like, sometimes there are six, 10 additional articles, and each one of those is going to add, when I don't remember any of those articles ever in the short time I've been here ever being, you know, we don't need to clean our water, we don't need that article, you know, it, it's never come to that. So I think a lot of those things, we, we've cleaned up that side of it already.
It's needed, the article's needed, and, but there's very limited discussion on that, but it does take some time, so. Every article, you know, there's, there's, there's the article that you need to read, there's the motion. If there is a, a long piece to it, I know Lucia likes to then give time for people to read, to review, so everything adds time.
I think one of the things I'd like to see, and that we, you know, the town could be looking at is, is how to bring, because a lot of, a lot of the stuff that takes time is kind of the, the operational side of it or the procedure to it. So if we have a, a vote that's close, and then we have, well, I'm not sure, did, did these people speak too loud? Or, or then the hands, ah, very close, and now we go to secret ballot. I mean, there have been times one vote has taken us, you know, 30 minutes, and it's like.
Because of the ballot process.
The ballot process, and one of the things I, I, and I don't know if it's going to be possible, but I'd like to see the town work towards a more autonomous approach to government, and I don't want anyone throwing a chair at me or anything, but in the sense of, it's just my, and this is just my opinion, I, when, when people have to say aye, or they have to raise their hands, and then, oh, who voted on that? Oh, so and so did, huh, and you see someone jotting something down, and, you know, we could, we could eliminate that with, and I'm, I'm interested in towns that have moved on to, whether it's a, a simple machine that they come in when they get all, all the votes they put, and, and there's autonomy in that, you don't know, and, and it should be, it's there, it's, it's how they wanted to vote, and I, I don't like the idea of, of, you know, pressure from either, from any side when it comes to an issue on there.
I thought we talked about that, doing that during the town meeting during COVID.
It, it was talked about, and I, I actually brought it back up with Dolores, who just retired our town clerk, though maybe potentially for that department to put in for some opera money, you know, maybe. And it's, it's something for us to look at, though. And it's, you see where some communities already do it, they have like a clicker of some sort.
That's what they returned to.
And so every vote, you know, just, it's done that way. There's, there's, there's many different systems. The question is, is if we adopt it, what is that system, what is the cost of that system as well?
There's always a cost.
Because, you know, do we, do we buy the software, do we lease the program? Do we lease, do we have a company come on in and, and have them come on in during, just for that, for that meeting? But that's a discussion we, we should have, and I think we will.
But it is fascinating, like, and Jimmy, you kind of alluded to, when, when we do finally get to the ballot, ballot and the machines, and it could be like an hour just on that. Lock the doors, feed the machines, now they're, they're counting them, and that's, that's kind of amazing when you're losing that much time to just kind of the procedure of it all.
And then you see usually that hot ticket item, that hot article, two-thirds of the audience will then leave.
Yeah.
Right after that. So the goal is, is, you know, that.
That's what happened at the special town meeting that ended at 12:30, we had very few people voting on those last hours.
Yes, I think there was 30 or 40 of us left in the room, and a lot of, a lot of the people that were left in the room were the elected officials, you know, sitting there, and, and the, and the town employees voting on that. So the goal is, is yeah, to, we've talked about it, you know, limiting the articles, we think that, you know, having the, the 35 plus one is, is a good time, and I, I don't foresee this going all night, I really don't.
Okay. People want babysitting services, what should they do?
Babysitting services are there, so I, I spoke to Barry Fontana, Parks and Rec guy, he said he already had counselors that would be stepping up again. Please, when you come, have, have a license, we hold the license to make sure that you get your child back, that you're, you're taking your child back, and we have a way of getting back to you. And then there are forms that they'll sign, just waiver forms, general liability waiver forms that they will have to sign in order to use the program. We always cap it at 9:00 PM, I know that can be difficult too, but we just can't keep everyone, everyone in there, so. We'll open the babysit, I know the doors open at 5:15, babysitting will probably be available at 5:30, and then it will end at 9:00 PM. The only other thing to that is, you know, the children do have to be potty trained, so we can't take on children that, you know, our councilors would have to change diapers and stuff like that.
Okay, so they don't have to sign up ahead of time, they can just come that night?
That is correct, that is correct, yep.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks for answering my questions, and town meeting again is at 6:00 PM on May 20th in the Dr. Robert Perry Performing Arts Center at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School. Come and make your vote, come.